Hello everyone and welcome to the Tunnel Meeting, this is episode number 7. We're gonna talk about all the actuality around Warcraft III. Today I'm gonna be joined by 4 guests, I'm gonna introduce each of you and then you guys can add something as well, if you want, because sometimes I don't always, you know, mention everything or like, I'm not sure exactly, like, everything that you do. So we're gonna start with Duro, who's a League Ops for multiple tournaments, retired for a little bit, then came back from Germany. Is that accurate and how are you doing, Joe?
Yeah, hello. First of all, thanks for having me here. Yeah, that's kinda correct. I am part of the scene as an admin, most likely. That's how I started and yeah, after first steps at ESL, I kinda stepped up a little bit. We started a new thing called W3IL and yeah, after like 2 or 3 years now in the scene, very active, I joined Back to Warcraft like 2 or 3 months ago and I mainly do the organizing stuff for all the upcoming Back to Warcraft events right now.
Okay, thank you. Then we got Scott, a player on Team Sweden, who plays Undead and looks like he likes heavy metal. And he's got some nice tattoos as well. How are you doing and is that accurate?
Kinda accurate, I'm also the babysitter of the team, so I make sure everyone shows up for the clan more and yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Then we got Death Notes. I think a lot of you will know that guy, a human player, streamer from Russia who streams pretty often. It depends, it varies with times sometimes, doesn't always use the webcam like I advised him to, but yeah, plays in a bunch of cups as well and plays for Team Oceanus Gaming as well. How are you doing, Death Note?
I'm fine, thanks for inviting me and nice to meet you all. And first time like in my life seeing how to, it's long, watching like Longwalk, Duro, it's like, I'm watching, I know how it's... Like, only haircut only.
Okay.
And now I can see all the face and, and estimate though.
Putting a face to the name, I like it. Longwalk, a Nighthill from the USA who currently lives in Germany and also, I guess, one of the biggest names in terms of Warcraft III from the USA in the last few years. Yeah, how are you doing?
Good, I should also say I play for Dust, so I give a shout out to the USA crew, but yeah, no, happy to be here, thanks for having me.
Okay, so let's get started. Our first topic used to always be the Reforged launch, but we kinda went over that quite a bit. So if you guys wanna mention anything about, you know, Reforged in general, the launch, whatever you can, you can do that, but we've gotta transform that topic into what would you like to see improved around Reforged? So it can be 1 thing, it can be 5 things, it can be 100 things, whatever you can think of. What was important to you, what do you think is missing and what would you like to see added sometime soon ideally? Duro, we'll start with you.
I think this topic is kinda, yeah, it becomes really boring for me. Obviously the game's pretty shit. In my opinion, all my hopes I put into Pad and I hope he's gonna bring us the game we all wanted to have. That's all I want to say actually.
Okay. Scott?
Yeah, I was to say, everyone has already said it, the first thing they should have been released at its state, they should have waited a half year more maybe, maybe 1 year and just actually finished the game instead of giving us basically a beta. And I think they should have actually not have changed the Battle.net and all that stuff and just given us better graphics like they did with StarCraft Remastered. Pretty disappointing.
Anything else like in terms of like features that's...
Well, we need a ladder, but as Duro said, I hope Pad is gonna be our savior and it seems like he already is, so let's see.
What about you, Death Note?
I think evil, I want to really some money change because I think Warcraft III is not balanced now. And for first, like for Blizzard, it's fixed pink, it's for me, I think it's most important because like if you play ladder, you can meet Korean players, USA players, it's really so bad. Second, I want to let Blizzard it change, that you can bind the heroes. Like, I played this first MK, like I make second Archmage and third Paladin, but I really, I think to grab it and I just can't use my, like, Mountain King when my Archmage is old, I can't use my Mountain King because I can beat him for 1 pin, do you understand me? Like... Hmm, how is, how is better to say? Like you can build your units for 1 pin, 2nd and 3rd and I want to bind my hero same. It's like, yeah, binds my heroes because I... Sometimes I want to use Paladin 2nd and Blood Mage 3rd, but not. I always make Blood Mage 2nd and Paladin 3rd because I just can't use Blood Mage as like 3rd hero because I always click F3 with Paladin, but fuck, it's not Blood Mage, it's Paladin. And I always like, really can play and can took another heroes because I click... Man, man, I want to make a change, it's like, I want to say, like, talk about balance, it's, we talked about balance today, yeah? We need to change. For Reforged, I think it's profiles need to return, like Blizzard, old platform, like Battle.net 1.0, it's first. Like, maybe, I think clans is not important, but MMR system, like in StarCraft 2, it's not, maybe it's so good for Warcraft III because for in Warcraft III, it's not enough like players and we maybe search games alone. But I think even, yeah, do, his path is helpful for use, it's much better for Blizzard than he's making, making faster.
Yeah, I would just say, when you play on Battle.net now, the games feel like they don't mean anything because there's no ranking, there's no point system. MMR's capped at 3000 I think, and so, yeah, like Netties is fun to play because you have a reason to keep going. When you win a game, you can actually see this experience in the ladder. And yeah, Battle.net right now just feels like a wasteland honestly. And I don't even know if this is a good question to ask because it seems like Blizzard has stopped listening. So I feel like, like Duro was saying, like the real question is like what can we actually do about it ourselves instead of waiting for them to, you know, address 10% of these issues, so.
What would be the priority for things that you would like to see added to the game? Like I'm guessing ladder is one of them, but anything else you can think of?
Yeah, I think there's probably like the pro players, the players who wanna be pro, and for them, I think the ranking, the ladder is probably the top priority because you just need some way of incentivizing people to play and wanna log on every single day. And then for the casual players, I think probably shared replay viewing or a better chat or just somehow making it fun again. Because I know when I was younger, you would log on after school and you would just join these chat channels and at least in the US, it was just like absolutely ridiculous, but it was also really fun to just hang out with people and to talk. And I feel like this whole social aspect is worse now than it was and it's crazy because in 2020, I feel like social media is such a big thing now and they actually took a step back here.
Yeah. Oh, Bnet is absolute trash, I think we all agree on that, it's like laggy, like the channels, the chat is... Every time on Bnet, I get tilted by the chat, it's fucking terrible, like, I really hate it. The fact that you have to create games public, so you're able to invite people that are not on your friendlies, which if you play tournaments, it's gonna happen all the time, is an absolute farce as well, so yeah, I hope they fix all that as well, alright.
Do you know exactly why the desyncs are happening yet? Like is this really just new graphics? Because that's also a huge, if you can't rely on the game, you know, kind of...
I think the main theory is that if some people are playing or observing with new graphics and some other are doing it with old graphics, there is some glitch and desync I guess that can happen sometimes where somebody just drops, which is part of the reason why Back to Warcraft has announced that they're going back to classic graphics and they're gonna force, or I guess like, just basically say that anybody that takes part in their tournament and wants to stream them is gonna have to use classic graphics to avoid having those desyncs, which I think is smart.
Yeah, we just had an incident on last Global Clan Cup.
Yeah.
And actually all observers using Reforged graphics just dropped out of the game while the classic users just remained in the game and that was kinda the neck breaking point, when we decided, okay, we are done with this shit.
Was it like a close game or...?
Actually the players stayed in the game because they are obviously using classic graphics, so there was no, no big deal at all and for quite a while, Remo was already using classic graphics while Neo is always streaming or was always streaming with Reforged graphics. So they just were able to screen the, share the screens and we could actually watch the game till the end. But yeah, that was, that was just the point when we said, okay, no more.
And then since switching, there hasn't been any problems?
Well, there are some drops as well, but it's not that likely. So it's, it's, for now, we think it's a good way to, to avoid it as best as possible, but we are not safe. But we never been actually, right?
Yeah. Alright, let's move on to next topic. It's the Todd Invitational, my tournaments, which started last week and is going to continue tomorrow. So we got the content sharing for this. We reached the goal of $700 for the prize pool, but we can still keep on building the prize pool for that on Match Arena to organize future tournaments and we had a couple rounds already played, but not all of the round of 16 games have been played yet, yeah. And like, so tomorrow, we're gonna have a lot of matches actually, because we're gonna have all the quarterfinals plus the 2 round of 16 matches that are missing. Death Note, you played in this? What happened, man?
Yes, I lost to Shake or, no, no, against who I lost, against Cash, yeah. I just play bad, sometimes it's, can happen with anyone, like every player. You have a bad days, you have like, maybe problem, problems with some matchups. And I think my matchup with Nighthill, like usually now it's not the best and I need to practice with some Nighthills and... Because I play a lot with Undeads, custom games and with Orcs. And I think when you practice against some others, your matchup, like every matchup who you're not trained, just down. And matchup with, and my matchup with Nighthill just down and I play so bad.
Duro, did you catch any of these games?
I've seen something on your stream, but actually I don't really remember what it was. I think it was Vortex versus Please.
Yeah.
Because I was kinda hyped to see more Vortex games because he was so surprisingly good when he came back actually. I was really looking forward to see the Muslim, I'm an old times Benjamin Baker fanboy, but sadly, I haven't found the time yet, so have to check out the VODs, yeah.
Scott?
Yeah, I checked them today actually and I think that, as Duro said, the Muslim was really impressive. I didn't think he would be that good. I think he could have won both game actually. And as, as well that Please versus Vortex was not really surprising, but at the same time a bit because Please has been, always been good, but I didn't think he would beat Vortex, so that was really nice to see.
Yeah. Yeah, I think like the results are like not necessarily like surprising or anything. Did you have any insights into like how Starshaped practiced for Foggy and...?
Yeah, he asked about 1 day if someone could play against him. And he played a bit against Lil DC, but not nearly enough. The result is not surprising.
Longwalk? Oh sorry, go ahead.
No, it's, it's fine.
Longwalk?
Yeah, I think I saw Foggy versus Starshaped on Amazonia. Foggy had done this Nature's Blessing, 2nd Ancient War against the Priestess of the Moon Mass Hunters. So I thought that was quite interesting because I've been doing a lot of Priestess of the Moon lately. And yeah, it always is quite close when you do this all in Mass Hunters, so yeah. I'm pretty curious to try it out myself to see how this works, but yeah. I was hoping Starshaped would win because obviously you want the strategy that you prefer to come out on top, but I thought that was a pretty creative response by Foggy.
Are you gonna keep up with the games? Because like we got some good elves in there. There's definitely some good inspiration to be found, I guess.
Yeah, no, I've been playing a ton of Netties the past few days because of coronavirus, so maybe it's the time to make it come back.
Sounds good. Well, the comeback part.
Yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, tomorrow we're gonna have a lot of matches. I'm pretty happy with the way it went so far. I mean, Neutron being in America, we kinda had to postpone his game at like the last second and stuff. And then I think that's gonna be, yeah, that's gonna be cast from replays actually tomorrow and then we'll have Happy Side. It's funny, Happy wanted to play, like, when I first invited him, he wanted to play the tournament in 1 day. It was like, oh yeah, 4 days or like 3 days, that's too much. And then now I put his round of 16 and quarterfinals on the same day. So he will play both of that tomorrow, assuming he wins against Side. And then the next day, he would have just to play against semifinals and finals if he wins there as well. So it's like, he'll play that in 2 days compared to most people that will have to at least played across 3 days. Okay, so next topic is a spicy one. Terror bans. So it's actually kind of a lucky timing that we have Duro here because we had already asked you to be on the show. So something happened during the GG Clan Cup between Terror, actually maybe you will be better than me to tell the story. I guess I'll give a little bit of a premise first with what I've heard and what I've seen. Is that yeah, Terror was playing against TGW. They were a little bit agitated maybe, like there was like a disconnect somewhere in there. And then Terror said some stuff that nobody should say using some homophobic slur I guess and also saying just some pretty poor stuff that yeah, obviously never should have said it at all. And in particular on stream like this when people, you know, when it basically will be archived forever. So he said it in Polish, but it's the internet, like obviously people's gonna, like somebody's gonna translate it and stuff. So it ended up coming out what he had said and Duro, who's League Ops at Back to Warcraft, made a ruling that says, or like in this tweet, it says, "We took our time to carefully investigate the case, happens..." Is that correct English? The case that happened during Global Clan Cup...
I'm not the author.
On Saturday, March 14th, this is our conclusion considering Terror. "No racism, no hate speech, no homophobia. On Saturday, March 14th, we run Global Clan Cup #1, an open tournament created from the Warcraft III community for the Warcraft III community. Amongst many others, the Polish undead player Terror participated in this competition. Due to circumstances beyond our control, one of his games was affected by a drop/dissync which ultimately resulted in a lost forsaken player due to the tournament rules. These rules have by now been reconsidered and changed to assure a more fair competitive environment in our own tournaments. After his opponent got awarded a win by default, Terror started a rant on his Twitch stream including homophobic and xenophobic hate speech. The exact wording must not be repeated at this point. Terror's behavior is unacceptable and inexcusable in our open, tolerant and globally connected Warcraft III community. We as Back to Warcraft cannot and will not allow this kind of behavior in our events, nor at any other place in the real or the virtual world. Therefore, we are banning Terror from all tournaments and cups for the duration of 6 months. We asked other tournament organizers to second and follow our decision to show that there is no room for racism, xenophobia or homophobia in the Warcraft III community. Sincerely, Duro, Back to Warcraft League Ops Director." That was a lot longer to read than I thought it would be first of all. But Duro, like you were in the middle of all of this, can you share any more thoughts about this, I guess?
Well, it's, it's obviously a super difficult topic, so first of all, I think everybody who was interested in this incident have most likely seen the video of Terror, the VOD. I mean, it's like all over the place in the scene or it has been all over the place. And yeah, well, first of all, actually, it happened in the game versus TGW that Terror either dropped or desynced or disconnected, I don't know, it's really hard to tell. And according to our rules, the rules we had at that stage for this cup, he just lost because TGW was not willing to give him a re-game. And that was mainly, yeah, well, the starting point for his unpleasant performance. Let's call it that way. Yeah, and after that, we were, we were really discussing for a long time how to judge on this case. I mean, there's a big difference if you flame somebody in-game or in chat or whatever, or if you do it while your livestream is running and everybody is watching it and then it goes onto YouTube, onto Twitch VOD and everybody can see this. And I mean, our scene is damaged already by the fucking shit game and now we also, or we actually begin to damage our scene by behaving like idiots or what? No, that's, that's just not the way how it can be, you know, how it can continue. And yeah, we decided to not allow Terror for a certain amount of time. In the end, we agreed to 6 months, which is obviously not the mildest of all judgments. But yeah, that's just what we came up with.
Who is "we" exactly?
"We" is actually all organizers and admins who are involved in the Global Clan Cup. It's like, I don't know, 6, 7, 8 people, most likely.
So it's like you, Neo and like, who else? Is it possible to know that?
It's actually in the rulebook, I don't wanna point out every single admin right now because in the end I just forget about some people and if you're interested, you can look into the rulebook and there are many names and all those people were involved.
So and then how did the decision to make it 6 months come about? Like, did you guys put a bunch of options on the table, like, you know, 2 months, 3 months, 6 months, 1 year and then like you said, you picked together or you voted or something or...?
The scale for the duration was actually quite wide. There were people that suggested slower durations, there were people that suggested longer durations and this was just like somewhat the average and in the end we agreed on this.
And so the ban in this case is from Back to Warcraft events, so that's GG Clan Cup and anything else than Back to Warcraft is gonna organize, which like is not announced right now, right? Just to verify.
Yes.
Okay. Scott, did you follow this whole thing and do you wanna share any thoughts on it?
I followed it a bit and as Duro said, I think it's a good decision because we don't need that much negativity right now since the 0.1 score on metrics or whatever, the Reforged launch got and if we want more people to join, we need to be more positive and have... If you, you want sponsors and all that stuff, you can't have guys going around and behaving like corrupt, basically. I think it's a good decision.
Does that include Warcraft III Info League also, Duro or...?
Yes, it does, but actually there are also other admins involved which are not part of the Back to Warcraft stuffs and we will actually discuss this ban separately and maybe we'll follow it, maybe we will even improve the ban. I don't know, hard to say, it will come up in the next couple of days.
Yeah. Death Notes, as a Russian, I'm sure you've seen the, the video.
I think it's a right decision for every action, it will be consequence. And he's sorry, but it's not enough like, because when you make something bad, even if you're sorry... And some negative people like never forgot. And for Russian ban, like for Russian community, he was banned for 1 year, not for 6 months only. Like for all cups who from Good Game Room.
Oh really?
Yes.
I didn't know that. Was it a big thing in the Russian scene, like even maybe outside of Warcraft? Like was it posted on like a lot of websites or was it mostly like, or like do you not know, do you just take Warcraft III websites?
No. And do you know, today Happy was banned too on Good Game Room?
Yes, but that's not the topic. Longwalk, did you follow this at all?
I didn't follow it so much, but yeah, I think it's a good idea. And when I read about it and saw it, I just think sometimes people forget that... Like I play in these weekly tournaments sometimes and I forget that there's actually admins running it and you rely on a lot of people to kind of volunteer their time and help. And it's not just about you and it's not just about whether you won the game. And I feel like you can get angry that you lost, you can get angry that something bad happened, but then when you forget that you couldn't play this game if there was no one else to play with you and you also couldn't play this game if there weren't admins and people doing stuff behind the scenes that you don't respect people, like no one has to let you participate, so.
And what, what do you think about the 6 month ban?
It's tough to put a timeline on it, like I don't, I could see arguments for a year, I could see arguments for, like, just depends on what you value and I think 6 months is definitely reasonable, so. I think it's more, it's just sad that it happens and I'm sure he wishes he didn't do it, but you can't take it back, like definitely.
So personally, first of all, I firmly condemn any words, you know, like homophobia, xenophobia and all of that racism, I think it's like never okay, but at the same time, I look at this and I'm like, he clearly said something he didn't mean because he was on tilt after what happened with TGW who like, you know, they were like arguing and stuff and then like he dropped and he lost the game, like it was like a shitty day and everything, so. He clearly said something, like to me it's very different if he said something like that and then doubled down on it. Like then for me, like the punishment maybe, must be like supremely severe. I'm not saying there shouldn't be any punishment now, but I do feel like maybe 6 months is a little harsh because in esports days, you know, it's like, it's like dog years or animal years, you know, it feels like it's a lot longer because like you can't really play any tournaments for like a very long time, you know?
Yeah.
So yeah, personally, I thought like 6 months was a little harsh and after he apologized, I kinda like chuck it down to, you know, like he made a mistake. He realized that like he did, he's sorry and for sure he should be punished, but yeah. I thought 6 months for sure was a lot. I feel like actually some of these things, even like to, to go outside like specifically like the Terror event and stuff, some of the thing, of these things are like a little bit cultural. I feel like if you grow up and this happens a lot around you, you might not realize how wrong it is to do this, but an event like this will put perspective for everybody. And I'm not saying that as an excuse for him also or something, it's just an observation, you know, like before I've been to like so many Warcraft III tournaments and there has been players around me that like, we were in America, for example, WCG in Seattle, I think it was, or it was called in Seattle. And there was this player, no joke, he was using the N-word out louds around African-Americans and I was like, what are you doing? And I think it's like a cultural thing, well like you don't know about it as much maybe if you're like from Europe, like the actual real meaning of the words. And I remember a time where actually I was using that, thinking it was a term of endearment. And I believe it was Grubby one day who called me out and he was like, what are you doing? Like you do know like what this means and like you should never say this. And then I was talking to him, I was like, what? And he was like, yeah, like, so he explained me and after that I was like, okay, I'm never gonna say this word ever again. So it feels like at some point you kinda have to learn like about it, like for a lot of people that will be in school or like, they would be very well educated on the matter, but I feel like maybe for some of these players, they might not really understand like the impact of certain words and especially now in 2020, there is like a lot of things that you need to make sure you will never say because they're very offending. And like maybe like 10 years ago, you know, like we were a lot more relaxed about it, like for sure. Like if you look at a movie like Tropic Thunder, for example, you know, like it's like politically, it's like completely incorrect as a movie, but... And I think he was Robert Downey recently that talked about this, I'm sure, so anyway, I'm going on a bit of a tangent here, but...
Yeah, so I wanted to ask, when you played StarCraft 2, did you find that there were more toxic people or like, is it the same amount? Or like, because a lot of people say that our community... is it the same amount or, like, there's a lot of people say that our community has a lot of toxic people. Like, on the whole, it doesn't, but you can see on the reddits, you know, people are often complaining like there needs to be better features to kind of filter these people out. Like, did you find in other games a similar amount of these people or do you think it's, you know, something for RTSs or is this just a very individual kind of, you know?
It's video games and it's on the internet, so I think there is always gonna be a decent amount of people that just understand that there can be no repercussion to their words, especially because everybody is like, it's so anonymous, right? When you play online, like you could almost say anything and think like it's never gonna get back to you. Like unless you start being, you know, well-known, people know your face, they know your name, then, then you can get like into a little bit more trouble. For example, but it's across all games, like, I think, I would say in team games, in my opinion, it was worse. Like I've had, uh, a stint playing like Dota 2 and Overwatch, like, oh my god, these games, like, especially because I played at like a pretty like, you know, modest or low level. And people were not as serious about trying to win and stuff, like there, there is a lot of flames and a lot of like not cool stuff that's being said, uh, in it too. So anyway, like, we're not playing, like, we're not really talking, like, you know, which game is the most toxic and stuff, there is like enough, uh, enough toxicity to go around in like every game, but yeah, I just wanted to add that about like the cultural thing. I think it's like a, a good discussion to have. And maybe it will help, like, a lot of people realize that might not know as much about some of these things and how they are. What, what's up, Testnot?
Yeah, you talked about toxic, like, uh, who most and Dota 2 is most toxic and it's now every, anyone who play like this game.
Yeah, you played Dota 2?
Yes, uh, but a long time ago, but I know.
Uh, I'm curious, Scott, do you, do you, uh, I don't know how to say it, but like, uh, does any of this relates to you? Like, I know like the Swedes, you know, you guys are very outspoken, you curse quite a bit. I remember Genro, when he played GSL and stuff, he was being interviewed, then he like cursed on TV and stuff, he said fuck. And then he was like, yeah, it's just the Swedish, you know, we like to curse a bunch and stuff. So, so do you feel like there is like some cultural thing involved in it?
I don't think it's anything wrong with cursing and being angry, but when you, when you do, when you target a group of people and just go ham on them just for being Russians or gay or whatever, I think that crosses the line by saying, oh, I'm so fucking disappointed. That's a whole different thing. Of, of course it's okay to be angry because that shows you wanted to win, but you can't really take out your anger on anyone else, but, uh, yeah, blister in this case, of course, but I think you have to, since we are, almost everyone is adults now, we have to behave ourselves a little bit more than 15 years ago when we was just teenagers.
But, but do you think that's because Terror said like, you know, the F-words, the ho- homophobic word, for example, does that make him homophobic? Or do you think it's like a hit of the moment thing where he's like on tilt?
I think, I think it's probably more hit of the moment, but that still doesn't make it okay because
Yeah.
people are gonna get sad because of it and I think it's, he should, he should really know better, even if he's just lashing out his frustration.
Yeah.
Then he maybe should shut off his stream and just scream into his pillow or whatever.
Good idea, I should try that. Next game against Sunday on Twisted Meadows. Come over here, pillow. Alright, uh, anything else you wanna add, Duro, or like, should we move on?
Um.
Do you think this like perhaps is gonna help in the future, people realize that like they should be more careful with what they say?
I really hope it does because, um, I think it's more of a general problem of our society and our behavior in the internet and gaming is just a part of it. It's obviously a large part, is, as you just mentioned, uh, all those MOBAs or shooter games or whatever. Everybody flames his teammates, everybody flames the opponent and I think this is just a kind of behavior that is completely unnecessary and it destroys so much joy and fun about playing video games. Or even on social media where people just, uh, trash talk, spam, flame everybody for no reason at all. And yeah, to be honest, I think it's just, it's pretty poor how we learn to use the internet. And I mean Terror isn't like a 15-year-old boy. He is, I don't know, 30 or something, I guess. And in my opinion, at this age, you should be able to control yourself to a point where something like that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Sadly, it happened and in my opinion, or actually in the opinion from all the admin team, uh, there's just no excuse for what happened and therefore we had to punish him.
And like, uh, it's, stuff like that is mentioned in the rules, right? Like just like disrespectful behavior and all of it specifically.
It is, it is.
Are, are the rules just gonna stay the same and say like no disrespectful behavior? Or do you think maybe like there's gonna be more mentions of like, you know, or how long a ban might be or?
Uh, I think, I think you cannot, uh, generally, uh, make scale on how long a ban, uh, does last. Because every case is, uh, kind of its own.
Yeah.
And it's really, really difficult to compare actually the flaming case Terror, for example, to, I don't know, uh, let's say Crypt or something. It's, it's completely different and you have to look at every single misstep, uh, on its own. Um, according, uh, the rules we use, obviously, uh, there are a few examples mentioned what is not allowed. But, uh, to be honest, just use fucking common sense. We are all human beings and there should, it should be pretty clear what you can do and what you definitely cannot do. And I don't think, uh, it's actually necessary to write every single pit, uh, bit down. I think most players don't read the rules anyways and it's not helpful if I make it like 80 pages long.
Yeah. It's like the, uh, iTunes terms of service. Alright, uh, yeah, let's move on to next topic, the cup news. So that's quite a few cups actually, or like, when I say cup news, it also includes specific one-off events, which actually, we're gonna start with one of those. The Fight Night 22 took place on the 13th, so that was just a few days ago. And Neutron was playing against Hitman, who was the defending champion and had won quite a few matches in a row. I think it might have been something like four. And Neutron was able to win three and two. He's currently in, uh, or actually was in America, so it was played without lag. I think he was even on the west coast. So a pretty impressive win by Neutron and, uh, a bit of a revenge from Dreamlike Anaheim where Hitman beat him and then went on to say in the interview, like, I think, I just think I'm a much better player and all that. So it was definitely interesting, the, the whole rivalry there. Longwalk, did you catch this?
I actually missed this, but I thought that was a pretty good win for Neutron. I played Hitman a couple of times and I think he's quite strong versus Night Elf. I don't, I don't know if he thinks he's stronger than Night Elf, but at least my experience is that he's quite good. And yeah, I was surprised at this result. I didn't catch the rivalry, so I can't comment on that, but yeah, no, this was a pretty good win for him, I think.
Scott?
Yeah, I think it was, uh, nice games. I, I thought Neutron would win 3 to 1, but, uh, Hitman had some really good game. Uh, it was it on Northern Isle? That was a really crazy game. Um, I think it was really back and forth. I don't remember who won that one.
And Neutron won another eye.
Yeah, that was a, one of the better game I've seen this year, actually. It was really exciting. But I, I, we're gonna discuss this later on balance, but I think we need some changes in the matchup.
Really, even though like you're talking about Orc versus Night Elf and you're an ended player.
Yeah, but I, I, I love, I love to watch everything and yeah, we get back to that.
Testnot, did you catch this?
No, because I slept on this time. But, uh, I'm happy for my teammate because he will won, plus he is eleven H. When Hitman said that Neutron just is not my level, I am a better, but much better player. But I think Hitman is very toxic guy and he need to teach control like yourself. Because he even a streamer and for streamer, I think, uh, first what you need to do and for you to learn, it's control yourself. Because you need always block your emotions and, uh, try to be static and, uh, but I think now Orc against Night Elf, not like much balance, I think Night Elf have advantage.
Duro?
Yeah, sadly, I missed these ones as well. I mean, uh, it's like, uh, 1 AM in the morning or something. That's completely not my time and, uh, my time is super short right now. So I've, I struggle to watch all the games I'd like to see, so there's a lot on my list and cannot comment much on that.
Okay. Let's see, up next, we got the Global Clan Cup, number one. So basically the cup that's replaces Rising Star Cup on Saturdays, that was the first one. And instead of, I think Rising Star Cup was winner take all, right? If I remember right.
Uh, no, it was 150, I think. So 100 for the first place and 50 for the second.
Okay, so this cup has a hundred dollars and that's 75 for first, 25 for second. And anybody above 2100 yellow could not play in it. So that was basically Happy, Foggy, uh, Vortex maybe, Blade and maybe X Lord. I don't remember if, if he also had more than that.
I think X Lord as well, yeah.
Yeah, so just those five players couldn't play. Uh, surprisingly, actually, some NA participation and Hitman making the finals. And Cash, uh, taking it all in the finals against Hitman. Yeah, like, these were some weird, weird, uh, results, like Hawk lost in the quarterfinals to Johnny Cage. And then, um, Cash beat Johnny Cage, like, I mean, it's not like big upsets or anything, but like Hitman beating Spiral, like usually you'd see Spiral very deep in the tournaments and Kirikaki, like, he just plays these once in a while and somehow shows up and does really well and now makes the semifinals. So were you guys able to catch some of this and, uh, what did you think, Testnot?
Hmm, I think it's a nice tournament and it's a nice idea to play like above for like 2100 dollar that players say like it, it's not happy, no happy, plus no foggy and you can play and show good results and try to be competitive. Because you really understand, you, you have a chance for one this tournament and, uh, it's always good and I, and I watched the games with Johnny Cage with Cash and, uh, Cash with Hitman and, uh, Cash is playing Human against Hitman.
So, yeah, what do you think of it?
About tournament, I, I guess, I say it, it's, uh,
Finals.
About finals, I think very close, but Cash won. It's good because I think, uh, Hitman is, uh, lost his, uh, skill. It's, uh, really much, I think, because he was play only like Battle.net. And played around to maybe 1200 games. With really so bad players and when you play so many games, you just drop your skill so much.
You seem to be a big fan of Hitman. Do you watch his stream often or?
No, I, I just banned on the Hitman channel. Do you know why? Yeah, I banned it on the Hitman channel. He's, uh, lost around seven games in a row against Double BZ and always rich quit. I just wrote to him, dude, why you not write the G and so angry? And he, he just say, really? I said, yeah, really. And he just banned me. It's all.
Well, I'll tell you something, if you do that in my channel, you'll get banned.
Uh, Scott, did you catch these games?
No, I was not at home, but I really liked the idea of an anti-happy tournament and, uh, letting some other guys get the show. That's definitely said that what they can actually perform. And I hope, I hope, um, they continue with this because, uh, it, when not happy and foggy are playing, I think more people will be uh, encouraged to sign up because they think, okay, I will have more of a chance this time. And I think that's, it's kind of healthy when we have some variation.
Longwalk?
Yeah, no, I agree. I feel like when Happy and Foggy are playing, you just, you see them in your bracket, you know, in the round of 16 and you're like, alright, so I'm gonna play four games only to run into Happy and, you know, there's a less than 1% chance that I make it out. And it's kind of depressing when you get in this situation, so, yeah, no, I love the idea, um.
But did you lose to Anna?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did. It was a good game. I haven't played this version of this Headhunter style, so I have to say, caught me by surprise, but it was a solid game. He played well, so. But yeah, um, what was I gonna say? Yeah, just basically, I wanted to say, I, I think Cash is actually a really, really good player. Like, I've played him versus all of his different races and I feel like he just has some kind of game sense that is quite impressive, so I'm not surprised that he beat Hitman. Hitman's a great player, but yeah, Cash is just very solid overall and I feel like he's kind of a wild card. You never know who he's gonna beat or what's gonna happen.
Yeah. Yeah, I played it. It was a pretty good experience. Like, I always, I really like the tournaments that Back to Warcraft organizes, um. Sadly, I lost to Please in the last best of one rounds, which was pretty sad, but yeah. Well done by him, I suppose. Um, Duro, actually, do you have any insights on, uh, like Global Clan Cup or like Global Clan, I guess it is, right? It's like a Korean team, like, did, 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 did they follow this tournament and were they happy with the turnout or is it like too early to talk about this?
Well, uh, personally, I'm in contact with the owner of the team or the founder, who's, uh, the sponsor for our cup. And he's actually sponsoring a ton of stuff right now. I think Dust League as well and, I don't know, several cups. And he seems to be very interested in the scene right now and he's testing waters and let's see what he can bring us. Um, about the Korean team, um, I don't have that much insights there. Um, maybe when we are going to have our Korean Invitational, we will, uh, have some contact with, with Chemico. And maybe we will can, we can have a chat there, but right now, I actually don't know if they followed it or not.
Alright. ESL Open Cup number seven. So in this one, there was no yellow restriction. And like it often happens. Sorry, what?
Uh, surprise.
Oh, yeah.
Ta-da!
Happy and Foggy made the finals yet again. Um, pretty impressively, I would say, I mean, it is actually, I've told them from cup number two that quarterfinals should be best of three and it still wasn't changed for this one, so I was pretty annoyed. And quarterfinals are still best of one, which sadly, obviously, that's where I would lose, right? Like, it's like the one thing I'm complaining about, but yeah. Uh, I've heard though that it might finally be changing, which I think is gonna be a very nice change. Um, I think quarterfinals shoe 100%, be best of three. But yeah, another impressive showing, Blade actually beat Hawk in this one. It seems like Hawk is starting to lose more to Inhuman, Yuman, to like Blade and Johnny Cage in particular, he's lost the last few series. But, uh, did you guys, Longwalk, let's see. Oh, you met Happy.
Exactly, that's why.
That's more acceptable than Anna already. How, how has your experience been playing in those, uh, cups?
I really like it. I feel like you can play ladder as much as you want, but then when you actually play a game that matters, where if you lose it, you're out, it puts the pressure on. And yeah, it feels more like a tournament feeling, obviously, because it is a tournament and yeah, I, like, I played Happy and then the next day on net ease, I saw Lali played Happy on the exact same map. So I can kind of compare all the reasons that I lost and so these cups are a good way to like put all of your skills to test, so. Yeah, and I agree with you that the best of three for quarterfinals is definitely a really good change because if you make it that far, you're gonna be playing against someone who's decent and then having the time to adjust in a best of three makes it way more competitive, so.
Can I just say, by the way, Lado, like, I saw him also make round of 64 in the previous cup. It's very solid back-to-back round of 64 he's gotten in there. I'm glad all those Reddit threads are, are allowing him to put up such steady performances. Uh, Testnot, did you play in this?
Hmm, not.
How come?
I just forgot to check in. You forgot?
Oh, you forgot to check in, yeah. How does that happen?
Dude, I have one job and I makes this job is bad. Do you know?
Um, Scott, you played?
No, but I checked some games for my teammates and uh, I was really impressed that Frog beat Starship. He's been home from work because of coronavirus. So he's been super happy, can uh, I was really impressed that Frog beat Starship, he's been home from work because of coronavirus, so he's been super happy, he can be playing again. But, um, I, as you said, it's really weird that they don't have best of three in quarterfinals, because you invested so much time and basically in quarterfinals every, there was, sorry, it's only good players left and
Yeah, and then Foggy goes wild in Onteran Stand and used Final Night six times and then I've already lost the games, like, can I get, can I get another shot?
Oh yeah, they, they should, I don't, I don't really think they have a good reason for not having it, because I don't think the tournament ends that late anyway, so that shouldn't even be a factor of it. Let's hope they put some change in.
How come you didn't play in this?
Uh, I couldn't, I could barely move my left arm, I had a new tattoo and it was twice the size, so.
I see. I'll, I'll allow it.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, Duro, did you follow this?
Uh, a little bit. Um, I think it was at the same time, uh, when we just launched the W3IL season, so I kinda just watched here and there into the grid. Um, to be honest, for me, it was pretty impressive that Bizar came to the quarterfinal. And sadly, uh, lost to Happy there, but I think it was, uh, most like the best result from him in a while, I think. Um, yeah, and to be honest, I don't actually watch the finals anymore, because I don't know how many Happy-Foggy games I've seen, I just don't know.
So the one day Foggy finally beats Happy in an epic finals, you're gonna miss it now because of it, but I guess you can watch the VOD later.
I'm fine, I'm fine, I'm just gonna check the VOD afterwards.
Yeah. Alright. Uh, the Back to Warcraft Korean Invitational, coming up this weekend, Saturday, March 21st, 11. I'm assuming this is 11am CET, because otherwise would have said 23. So actually, I'm gonna start pretty early, that's because Korea is what, like 8 hours or something ahead, so that would be maybe 7pm for them. Uh, it's gonna be just four players, a double elimination with Lolite, Focus, Chemico and Soin and this was funded through, um, a Match Arena page, which actually like got a lot, a lot of supports. And there's gonna be a thousand dollars going towards the prize pool. I think this is really sick to organize this and also say like, oh, we've already done so many tournaments for like Europe and stuff, so this time we're gonna do one for, uh, Korea, but I do wanna say, if there is one criticism, I would have liked to see more players maybe. With maybe like, you know, Lucifer, Remind, Sock in there as well, I think that would have been pretty cool, but it, I think it's gonna be a pretty sick tournament, uh. In any case, Duro, did you have any, any part in organizing this or not yet maybe?
Uh, yeah, we were discussing obviously which players we are going to invite and also the number of players we are looking for. And we decided that four players is actually a little bit better if you want to make something on one day. Because, uh, it's, for the players, uh, if you play in a tournament with eight players actually and you drop out in the first round, it's very disappointing and you don't have enough time to make a double elimination tournament that, uh, will be finished within one day. And therefore, we kinda try to make something that is actually a good experience for our viewers. For, that is good content for the stream, obviously. And yeah, also fun to play for the players and everybody has fun, uh, has fun and it's a win for, for all of us. And yeah, well, we still have like 700 dollars that, uh, that were also funded, I think we were at 1700 dollars or something.
Yeah.
And this will be moved into the next Invitational most likely. And yeah, let's see what, what this is going to bring us, so I'm really looking forward to have this. Will be really cool, I hope.
Scott, you excited?
Yeah, I'll, I miss, of course I miss an Undead and I would have liked to see Suck, because I think he's the most fun human player from Korea, but, um, uh, I think it's nice to see Soin get invited, because he's always a bit behind the other ones and I think it's really nice to, he gets the opportunity to show what he can do. Because I think it's a really strong player, but he, when it's top eight, gets invited, he's never there and I think he will surprise people.
Testnote, what do you think Chemico's chances are here?
I think Chemico have a decent chance, because he's really so much improved and his skill really is so high, but I'm disappointed that it's only four players and I don't see a Sock. Because I love to watch Sock games so much and I don't understand why they invite Soin, because if like they invite, for example Lucifer, it was four aces, it's Night Elf, Orc, Human and Undead, it's like four aces and it's maybe fun for watching. Like, they said, okay, we invite only four players. But I think Sock play like on three or four times more than Soin and, but to invite him, I'm sorry.
Longwalk?
I think it's really cool, I think it's crazy that they got so much money from the community or something like this, like that's really impressive how much we show dedication and that Back to Warcraft and the whole team, Duro, that you guys do stuff like this. I think four players is maybe not optimal, maybe you could have done eight, but I do think it makes it more personal, so you have, you can really see in a double elimination bracket, like how everyone lines up against every other person, so. Yeah, also the players, people are gonna have their own favorite players, but I mean, maybe next time you can in, have like a poll for what players to invite before you invite them or before you get the donations, so people feel like there's more of a say or something, but yeah, I'm, I'm happy about it, I'm excited, I think it's a really good idea.
What do you make of, sorry, go ahead.
May I quickly interrupt? Um, actually, um, we asked all the people that donated on Match Arena or that, that bought the Match Arena supporter rule or something, uh, that was like, I don't know, 5 dollars or something, everybody who spent 5 dollars, uh, to the prize pool, um, was invited to a, a private group on Discord and we asked there, what kind of players would you like to see? And we tried to get some feedback there, um. It wasn't like an open vote or something, but we just took into account what people would like to see. And for example, uh, we just liked the idea of having more Orcs, I think Orcs are super rare these days, especially good ones. And yeah, Soin is also quite, quite a talent and has some really fun games, uh, or had some really fun games in the past. And we just liked the idea, basically.
Longwalk, what do you make of the chances of Lolite in this one?
I think they're quite good, I think he's been playing a ton lately, maybe because coronavirus, everyone's stuck at home, but I, I see so many replays of him. Like I've seen replays, like this week where on Tuesday morning, he was doing something, I think versus Orc, maybe undead. Someone countered his creep route and then by the evening, the new replay, he had already adjusted what he was doing, so I feel like I really see he's getting the timings down to like the second, so I, I'm pretty confident in Lolite, I, I hope so, as a Night Elf.
Alrights. The ESL ANZ champs was announced, so it's supposed to have a pathway to DreamHack Summer, which, you know, it's kind of in limbo right now, whether like this is gonna happen at all, like they halted the sale of tickets and all of that, but there is gonna be some prizes, so like some pretty good prizes and it's pretty nice to see something happen over there for that region of the worlds. So let me check some of the names here that we have in the first qualifier, I was having a look earlier, I thought, I thought it looked pretty cool, like it seems like the player really showed up to it. So you have like all of the, I guess, major name from the region, like you know, Moonglades in there, Sayso, Seron, Salt Puppy. And yeah, I think it's pretty cool to see, uh, the Oceanian scene gets a bit of their own tournament, I don't have a ton of info on it sadly, so it's not like I can talk about it a whole lot, but, uh, did you guys have any thought on this, Duro?
Uh, yeah, it's just awesome that, uh, the Oceanian players just get a tournament again. So for such a long time, they are dealing with extremely poor conditions of playing, like 200 ping is like the best you can get. And there are still so many players from, from Australia, from New Zealand or whatever. And it's really cool that they finally get their own league, although their conditions for playing might not be the best, but I really hope we will see more from the, uh, players from Oceania, so it's really cool to me.
Uh, Longwalk?
Yeah, I, I think it's really cool, um, I don't know so many of the players, but I just that feeling of actually being able to go to a tournament and play in a game that you really love is a great feeling, so I think this has to be a great feeling for them and yeah, I think it'll bring them more into the scene, hopefully.
Testnote?
No, I do think that it's good idea to make a tournament like on, for Ocean's players. I play a lot with Sayso, for example, on the T and he's, uh, try a lot. And maybe it's a good chance for, like, for showing yourself, because Europe tournaments is so like, Europe or even, uh, not tournaments is really hard to competition for they. And like if you want something, uh, small, like in only oceans, you maybe will be try better and improve your skill and maybe it's, we, we'll soon we'll see it on best ocean player.
Scott?
Yeah, I think it's nice, as they said, they haven't really have any good conditions and now with Reforge, I think most of them have around 450 ping when they're trying to play on Battle.net. And this is really good, because, um, they still have good players, I, Sayso is really good. Moonglade is an old school player that probably get in shape really quick and yeah, it's, it will be exciting to follow basically and the more ESL shows Warcraft love, the better it is for all of us, basically.
Duro?
You had me already.
Oh, it is.
And nothing more to add.
Alright. Uh, actually, this just concluded here, the GGGs Weekly Cup, which is a full best of one cup every Wednesday. I'm thinking in the future about, I, I probably will start playing that one as well. Um, so either I will make sure that the tunnel meeting starts late enough that I can play it, or maybe move the tunnel to Tuesdays. But yeah, it's every Wednesday, it's pretty cool to have a cup like this every Wednesdays, that means that three days of the week, we for sure have a cup between this one and the ones on Saturday and Sunday. And Hawk was able to win the whole thing apparently. Testnotes, how did you lose to Inhuman, Human to Spiral? I, I, I only saw the end of the game, but what happened in that game?
First, like, I have 3, when we meet together in a lap, I get 3 bushes on my Mountain King and my Mountain King with almost 300 hit points, I must die. Like, because we both fighting on the lap and main, like, uh, main creep is stop, uh, start to attack my Mountain King and just bash, 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 oh my god, I just clicked TP like 10 times and was TP on maybe on 30 hit points. Without any like bolt, I almost died with 300 hit points and he is by Shredder and creep this spot and get Mountain King level 4. And he was ahead and after I got Zippelin, start to harass him for first time, first harass is really so good. But I make a second to like, wrong decision, I just repaired Zippelin and come to drop his again for his base, but it was be my mistake, because on this time, he was creep on spot. And overall, he's grabbed more than me for one this spot and got Mountain King level 5. And for me, it's not enough for 8 experience for level 5 Mountain King and just in the fight, I can't kill a unit, because he have level 5 Mountain King, I am not, I'm not enough only 5, uh, 8 experience for me and I lost this game.
This is amazing and I don't need to watch that vote or that replay, I already know everything that happened. The Zeppelin, the repair, him getting level 5, thank you, thank you for Uh, yeah, but you had some nice win before that, you beat Krav.
I beat Please, I pissed J Dark, I beat Krav.
Yeah. Do you think it's good to have like a cup like this with the best of ones?
Yeah, I think it's good and it's really fun, fun to watch and, uh, like, uh, players, so only cup, and Happy was banned on this cup tournament, I want to say. It's a good game, like Miker, is banning him from his, uh, um, side, because Happy says so many shit words.
Well, what happened exactly with that story?
Hmm, Happy, okay, the story that, uh, some guy is donated, donated for Happy around 320 dollars. On, um, and after one month, he's, it was comeback his money. And Happy said, this is fucking shit platform, good game rule and like every donation alerts and another, another nice like platforms is not back money. But only good game rule is, uh, and say many bad words about this platform, say it's, uh, I never do stream anymore on good game rule and YouTube and just stream now on YouTube channel.
So somebody donated to him and then got a refund for the donation?
Yes.
And then Happy went on tilts, like, I guess he talked to them? And he just said, I never wanna play, not only this tournament, but also good game is a streaming platform, right?
Yes, I, and say about this platform is so much shit and Miker, it's a, a main like admin platform and he said, fuck, just, uh, just refuse Happy for player, good game, uh, rub cups anymore. Because Happy need to say to Miker, I'm so sorry, I'm just, uh, was bad, it's my fault and can I play again?
So Happy said it?
Not, it's Happy need to say, to play any tournament on good game anymore. But if Happy is not say that, I think it was good for Europe players and for our, for all Russians and like SNG players, because we, we can, uh, meet like, I play with Hawk and Foggy and, uh, and other tournaments and not only, not Happy farming though, because mostly 90, 95% tournaments, just farming for Happy and, uh, like many streamers, many people and just, many casters don't want to watch even, even final, because off prediction, Happy will win final like 3-0 and it's all.
So how many, like, what other tournaments are hosted on good game? Is it also, is the WCR Cup? Or something like that, is that also on good game or? Oh, so it's only GGGs, like this one?
Yeah, this cup is every, every week, plus sometimes, uh, I think like 2, 3 cups a week on good game rule, it's really very decent.
Yeah. Uh, Longwalk, did you partake in the, in this tournament at all or?
No, but I think I want to next time, seems like a pretty interesting format and I think best of one, I just said that quarterfinals should be best of three, but I think best of one changes the way you think about it and the way you play. I think it's, it's more fun, you can try more cheese strategies or just kind of, yeah, I think it's interesting.
It's also only on one specific map and I think that's very interesting, they don't disclose the map until the tournament start and I think
Oh, it's one map for the whole tournament?
Yeah.
Like?
They, they, at, at the tournament start to say, okay, today we will play Twisted Meadows or Terran Stand or whatever. And then it's the same map every game and I think that's kind of fun.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of fun, yeah, I can't wait to sign up and then I miss Twisted Meadow and then I forfeit round one. And by the way, today was Terran Stand, so I should have been in there, like this is, I missed the Terran Stand week. It's over for me, it's only downhill from there. Uh, Scott, you played in this tournament, I saw Dreadlord level 10.
Yeah.
In one of your games, uh, against Night Elf.
I lost.
But that was a fun game, right?
Yeah, probably for reviewers, but it was not fun losing it, but I could have won, but, um, yeah, he played good, Demon Hunter is a very strong hero.
Um, alright. Duro, did you wanna add anything? You didn't already talk about this, did you?
No, 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 not this time, not this time. Well, uh, let me mention just one thing, uh, it's really good to see Hawk winning something again. it's really good to see Hawk winning something again. I think he uh had a very, very bad streak recently and I really hope for him that he finds uh back his his shape or gets back into shape. Um, because yeah, I think uh for for like a couple of weeks, uh he improved really quickly and really much and I think there was also some games against Happy that were really close. And then came like a huge breaking point and um Hawk kinda lost track of his game. And I think he had really, really poor results and very disappointing games. And yeah, I really hope this helps him to kinda find find his shape.
Yeah. Alright. Let's see what's next. Um, actually, it's uh we're done talking about the cups. It was enough of them, scored a few of them. Let's talk about Pad's ladder, which is called W3 Champions, I believe. So Pad is the, like if you want to chime in as well, Duro, go ahead, because I don't know if I can make sure that I mentioned everything, but I believe Pad is the creator of W3 Arena and also of W3 Booster, right?
Yeah, so uh Pad was the, so if I remember correctly, W3 Arena was set up by multiple people and Pad was maybe the the uh head developer over there and he was working on the coding part and stuff like that and he um yeah, set up the platform the way we learned to know them. Um, then sadly, he was kinda lost for a while, I think, or at least uh I lost track of him.
Yeah.
And bless God, he found his way back into the scene and uh first of all, he gifted us the beautiful tool, uh W3 Booster, which I think even many players that uh don't stream at all are using right now because uh it's so nice to get your opponent stats, to get your own stats, uh to get, I don't know, uh to to see what kind of hotkeys uh you 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 are binding and stuff like that. It's just a great tool and now um, yeah, I mean Pad just tweets something. He says, oh, I kinda have an idea. Let's bring a ladder back and I was just considering it and yeah, maybe I need like a week or something and then you will have a ladder. And guess what? Three days later, he's just releasing a public alpha. And it works. It fucking works and it's it's incredible. I mean, there's like a multimillion dollar company or billion dollar company, I don't know. Which are remastering a super cool game. Turning it into trash and this one guy manages it in like three, four, five days. I don't know what exactly uh amount it was to bring us well, the the gen- the general technique to set up a ladder again. And that's just, that's just insane. So I mean, he has um a Patreon side and I really hope he gets a lot of money out of it because he really deserves it.
Yeah. Have you guys tried out the ladder yet? Scott, Longwalk and uh Desnot?
Uh yeah, yeah, I tried it today and uh just one game and just fine match, press it and instantly got a game and good ping because I think I'm not sure how it works. I think it's E EU versus EU, so it makes sure, yeah, at least right now, so we don't get four hundred fifty pings against, yeah, someone from the same state and game over and then you have it one zero. You see the stats immediately and it's unbelievable that he can do that in three days while Blizzard just did the massive fuck up that he did.
He 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 has access to superior technology apparently, yeah. Uh I think he mentioned to me that it was possible to meet somebody where like you would have like a not so good ping or something, but it was like very rare. And I think it's probably like, yeah, just coded a certain way. Uh I saw, yeah, that there was rankings somewhere here. We see like the top ranked people. I don't know who Magwa is, but I feel like I'm gonna have to get on this ladder and smash this guy because this is unacceptable. This unknown is rank one.
You have it up to right, uh you have rankings.
Yeah, yeah. But we see Kevin is already playing on there. I guess Knessel, so one of the guys that was on the
Knof played around twelve games today and it just works. It's no problem at all. It's awesome.
Yeah, uh I wanted to show actually the Patreon. There's a Patreon for this to help support, uh I guess because like Pad is obviously gonna be spending a lot of time on this, so uh I'll put it under the video that I will post on YouTube for the vote for this, but otherwise the link is patreon.com slash W3Pad if you guys wanna check it out. I'll put all the links, like the where you can find the install. There is like a nice little intro. Uh there is a demo video that shows how it works and everything. And I think it's really sick to have people like take this initiative, you know, like we kinda covered in the last episode how we have to make the scene better ourselves. So for some of us, you know, it's like streaming, entertaining, competing for like Duro, like it's through uh being the admin and niggups in some tournaments. And I think it's really cool to see like a lot of people kinda playing their part and like, I think Pad's a massive part in that, so I hope that this project takes uh or has a lot of success. I'm trying to find the rankings. Knof want me to show the rankings. I'm I'm gonna assume it's probably like somewhat rank high or like the full rankings. Do you guys know? Where I can find this or? I just find individual profiles so far.
And apparently the chat is saying that there is a patch.
Oh, there is a patch? Can one of the mods maybe link it so we can talk about this as well? But yeah, like uh I wanted to make sure like we talked about this. It's like a very important project, which I think is is very cool currently. If you're somewhat competitive in Warcraft 3, you need to play on Netties. And that's just like the reality of it. Or you can try and play custom games, I guess, on Europe, but it's not as reliable, like the player base is not always big enough that you're gonna be able to find games all the time. Thank you, uh actually, might mess up the scene for a second. Yeah. So we got the full ranking, let's see. What what if Knof want me to show this? He's ranked ten only. Like, why are you bragging about this? Two muscles. Come on, bro.
I think he lost his set sheet today.
Yeah. Vortex actually playing on there and that's pretty cool to see.
Wow, ina top fifteen, oh.
Yeah. Oh, I think it just like really recently started, so obviously we're like at the start. But uh yeah, it's cool to see all of these people getting involved with it. I'm sure I'll try it as well at some point and uh
Yeah.
I wonder, so we go ahead.
Uh if you look at the bottom, you say see showing fifteen of four hundred and seven, so already over four hundred people have tried it and I think that's amazing for just the one day. And I think this has a lot of potential.
Yeah. Um, what was I gonna ask? Uh yeah, I was gonna ask Duro, um do you think that like host bots are gone forever, right? Or do you think that because Pad was able to do this, there is a chance he might find a way to also make host bots work?
No, I don't uh think they will come back unless we suddenly set up a server on old patches again. I think uh this feature was removed completely. I think it was removed due to uh legal reasons for Blizzard.
Yeah.
And I am pretty certain they made sure this part of the game was also crashed.
Okay, well, that's that's quite sad. I really hope we get servers then, at least of all the possible things.
You forgot me, Todd.
What?
You forgot me.
Oh, yeah. Did you? Did you play?
Yeah. Not, I'm not play, but uh I really seen that Path is awesome, right? Because I remember like two thousand one hundred eleven day like days like and when Battle.net almost dead. Really almost dead because I remember with fifteen, with 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 fifteen zero, you can uh search a game around ten ten hours and it's really shit because I think without Path, Battle.net was dead. And Path is make uh with with three arena with Yosh and uh Warcraft III is still alive around maybe five, maybe six years, just for two guys. It's uh and after Path is make Warcraft III Booster. It's really most important for streamers because when you play even on Netties, some guys is always right every one minute. Against who you play, against who you play and you you said, I don't understand geniuses. Look, look his name. And his name like uh fifteen the geniuses like uh symbols and I don't know even who is it. And every like minutes, some guys is right it and Path is do it. And now Path is making new ladder. It's really awesome because uh even Blizzard, we say so huge company is not making it, really.
So you plan on playing on this ladder in the future?
Hmm, to be honest, not. But because I play on Netties, it's the most competition for me. I even change my sleep schedule for like uh to play only on mornings.
Yeah.
And meet the best players. Like I played twenty games and uh like nineteen games I played with top players that's like lovely at six games a row with Babel VZ. After two games with Zilean and like my stats only fifty-four percent like win rate, fifty fifty-four, fifty-five. It's it's really
Don't you think that uh when, like, let's say all of the best European players switch to this? Don't you think this is gonna be very good practice? If like all of the players that we have, all of the European players that play on Netties right now, like all the better ones?
Yes.
They start playing this. I think this is gonna be way better practice because then you have good ping and you're still playing really good players. Like, sure, you're not playing like you know, like Infie and one twenty and all of that, but you're still playing very good players and you're not playing like a very unrealistic scenario in which you have like uh two hundred plus ping and they have like twenty ping. Now it's like equal ping, so this like the actual real game as it's meant to be played with like proper micro and everything.
Yeah, Jan, you are very right, but uh need to make like a second ladder for I think need to make second ladder for just like semi-pro and pro players. Because uh currently, even I don't want to play like with someone who play just normal or good because uh I think it's will be make ladder. When you can play like this Hawk, this Foggy, this Vortex, this X Lord and like this Blade. Uh like every game you took uh one the best Europe player, I think it's be really awesome ladder. But maybe for Europe, it's not enough for players.
Yeah.
I think. Because on Netties, you have, yeah, some ladder where on every game you took the best world player. And even uh so bad ping is uh make it's Europe trying and much better and you can grow a lot. I think I lost a lot of time when I play on the nights and like on the evenings and not improve my skills so much. And I tried to catch up with and like and play only on days.
Okay, so if you guys want to check out this ladder, it's W3Champions dot com. Not sure about the name. It kinda reminds me of Doctor Disrespect Champion Club, which makes me think of the Sleek Daddy Club, which makes me think of other things, so. But uh yeah, W3Champions dot com if you guys wanna try that ladder. So a a patch just came out while we were live. And we just got the patch notes thanks to Sid and all the people in the chat getting hyped, so I guess we can talk about this before we move on to balance.
I wonder what part of the Naga they have changed now.
That's actually at the top.
The underwears. Okay, so let's have a look into this whole thing. Uh you guys can, it's posted in the chats if you wanna open the link as well and like I'm not gonna read all of it because apparently, ah, I guess it's not that long, but yeah, we can just have a glance. No. Naga units now have footprints in Reforged mode.
Fucking kidding me?
Don't do it, guys. So yeah, the first uh uh the intro reminds us that there is a dedicated team here still focused on Warcraft III. That's good to hear because it feels like we hadn't heard anything in a while, so. But apparently there's still people who are here and hard at work on the game. Um, you guys see anything worth mentioning? Like for for personally, I'm not really into the campaigns, so like whatever is changing the campaign, I don't really wanna address myself. Ooh, fixed an issue that could cause bridges to desync when a client with Reforged graphics played with another and classic graphics? Is that the desync issue fixed, Duro?
I'm actually not sure.
What does bridges?
I actually need some time to think about it, to be honest. Right now, I'm I'm asking myself uh as well, what what does they mean with bridges?
And Anaheim, right? That with Thorzane, both game were, I mean, there's bridges by the expansion. Maybe this is like the actual terrain.
But are are real bridges? Uh the first uh thought that came into my mind were the like the real wooden bridges that are uh on par uh on some maps like uh do you remember the map Bridge to Near or something? They were like these real wooden bridges?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And Tirina Stand just has normal ground, as far as I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. It maybe it might just be a term to talk about the
I think they just mean that when one have Reforged graphics and one have classic, they kinda.
I just want to look balanced like uh I want to nerf Warden. I want to, I want to open this station. Look, my arc mage give one hundred points at like ten attack damage and nerf Warden, for example.
That came out of nowhere. Desnot was ready to explode. He's like browsing, he's like, what? Wait, where? Where is the balance? Where is the Warden?
Why is fucking Dauran stomped nerf? Why is Ranch nerf? I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, it definitely feels like first they're gonna be focused on fixing a lot of the problems then. Before addressing any kind of balance for now, but yeah, I guess, yeah.
Why it's bunches nerf, guys?
I mean, like Super hype when they said there was a patch in the chat, but no, I'm reading through it. I'm like, nah.
It's like nothing, right? Uh at least if you're a player and you play this game competitively, so like you you want to, you want to hit the play ladder button. Uh, yeah, well, hmm, okay. Thanks. Next.
I really want to like, I think, okay, maybe they make MMR system, good MMR like for and maybe part like even better than make part, but not, they again make some shit. I do what is this? It's only normal that that will make desync, the syncs is now maybe be less. Or maybe they just have fixed all. I don't know. Or maybe with this patch, we will see a new ten bucks.
Yeah, fix an issue where mid wagon sometimes did not properly play the death sound in Reforged mode. Like, are you fucking kidding me? Who cares about this? What the fuck?
Yeah, who care?
Or like the art stuff, yeah, like. I don't know.
There there cannot be anything uh of major importance right now. That's that is that is what needs the game right now. The art must be perfect, the audio must be perfect. Everything at next to it, forget it.
Yeah, like, yeah, the Bnet UI and stuff like needs to be improved, like, I feel like it take all of this, take everything that was in the previous patch, like even revert it if you want and give us ladder. And then like people are gonna already celebrate like crazy. It's gonna be like a big win for Warcrafts.
To be honest, I need no images at all. It it could be like a dust box. I don't care at all if you just could play the game well.
Yeah. But do you not care that the Blood Elf archers and swarmsman command card icons in the Curse of the Blood Elves campaign have been updated to have green eyes?
I'm sorry, I fell asleep.
Okay, I feel like this is a joke. Like, really? Is this like what we're focused on when we think about Warcraft III?
Yeah.
Do you think like the people that like rated the game on Metacritic, they're gonna read this patch note, they're gonna be like, alright, let's give them a one, a solid one. Like, let's take the oh point five back. Like, who the fuck cares about this? Blood Elf lieutenant has seen the dungeons of Dalaran now use the correct command card icon. I don't give a fuck about this.
Oh, this is embarrassing.
Give us ladder, like give us an improved UI, like all of the things that we've been mentioning, some extra servers. I don't give a shit about the Blood Elf lieutenants. Not one single shit.
This is even worse than the last patch, basically.
Oh my god, guys, like, I guess the one thing is that if these things were finally fixed. That's a, that's a big win, I guess, but, I mean, shouldn't have been broken in the first place, but that that's a win. But, I mean, there is so much more important stuff that needs to be changed, it's insane.
Well, if if they would do it well in terms of promoting their work, then they would just release a patch with only this thing. And they just say, okay, right now, we know there was an issue and we finally fixed this, bam, here's the patch, look at it, and the issue is gone. Um, to be honest, right now, we don't really know if it's really gone, but let's assume it is, yeah, thanks, that's cool. That's actually really cool, but if they would just remove all this unimportant stuff around it. It would be like a good thing, well, you you can sell it, you can sell it like we we fixed something, we fixed a major issue of the game. But now it kind of gets lost in all these, I don't know, crops and footprints and.
Hey, let's play a game, let's find a positive comment. Good luck, holy shit. It's like people are like unanimously outraged, a lot of this. It like even, even the nice guys of the scene that like almost never said anything bad, they finally lost it, we are like incinerator, we had Lado with his. Phone call to Blizzard, like, that was amazing, like, the end actually caught me off guard, I don't know if you guys saw that, but that was sick.
Yeah, I actually laugh, laughed loud of that, it was the best thing this week, I think.
Hey, this is crazy, because like every show we say the same thing, like, what's the first thing that we want added, what's the priority? And we all agree like ladder is like very high up there, like improving B nets, maybe getting some servers, and then like we see the patch notes and I'm like. The Naga units now have footprints in reform modes? Are you fucking kidding me right now? Like, this is bullshit. Guard dog critters will no longer be invisible in classic mode. What?
Zookzook, my friend.
Oh my gods.
And this was a two gigabyte patch as well.
Yes, just two gigabytes, yeah.
Anyway, fuck this, let's talk about balance, guys.
Balance, oh. I think human about want to talk about balance, yeah?
Actually, Death Note, since you seem talkative, this is the, by the way, the last, actually, I guess we got the Q and A after, long walked, you have to go soon? Or I remember you told me you were there for one hour and a half, I don't wanna hold you.
Yeah, I'm fine, I can, I'm, I'm good.
You can stay?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, thanks, I I don't think we'll be too much longer, we just have to talk about balance and then Q and A, so. It's gonna be pretty straightforward, me and Death Note are gonna say human is weak, you guys are gonna say it's the best race, like, you can already pretty much move on, maybe. But yeah, uh, Death Note, how do you feel about all the matchups, so human against undead, against orc, against night elf individually? And can you rank the races in Warcraft three from worst to best?
Hmm, okay. To like, for worst, it's, I think worst, it's maybe.
I think first is better if you talk about all the matchups, like, say, like, human against undead, human against elf and human against orc, like, what would you think?
I think human against undead, it's a fucking confiesta matchup, it's really, if. If undead twice, like a similar level with you, you will lost. Like if undead is like a kill, some creeps is squirrel, you lost. If you have a bad items, like you lost, if you lost some peasants, you lost. You have no way, you can't play with one base, because Blizzard, it's not give that. And human have no have a good units against undead like knights. Undeads just steal your all knights, you have a three bases, you make hundred supply knights. And undead just with one base will win you with just one base, just make twenty bunches. He have like thirty supply, he steal your all knights and he have hundred supplier already. Not need to even the base, because knights is a bullshit unit, like, if you. Graffins, it's like graffins is a stronger human unit. But like you need three three upgrades for graffins, you need hundred supply to fight with undead. If you have less, you you lost like rifles, it's two coil nova impale, it's again shit unit. You just break it, it's just not damage unit, like prees is dispel plus again not damage, sorps is same. You just have, but don't have really a single good unit against undead on this matchup. Every unit is can be countered with undead. What, what are they talking about? Like, can Blizzard not give away, play without expa? I think it's, they nerf expansion, they nerf militia, they nerf defend, but they not give away how to play without expa. Against night elf, I I think all good for human. Only I think need to nerf Warden and change maybe some maps. I think Warden is really so strong. And no way, because blink can just kill twenty peasants for five seconds. Even we can play with one base against undead with rifle push. And this strategy may be cloud be work against good players, but every good undead player can just abuse your peasants. Just by TP, come to your base, kill your peasants for five seconds. Human peasants, like, you have thirty seven, thirty peasants and these thirty peasants will die for five seconds. Like, if if you come to undead base, you just lost your arc mage, you lost your Warden kill and not kill a single collide, because undead base is so strong. But when undead is come to your base, just five seconds, and. Your peasants are all burnt with five seconds and he just like TP. By TP, again, go to your base, for five seconds, kill your all peasants and again TP, and you think, what the fuck, what the hell? I cannot take this stupid pace, I just, what I need to do? Blizzard not give me away how to play with undeads. Against Orcs, I think it's a hard matchup for human, but human can win. And I think just need to nerf stomp, I think. Maybe they nerf a club, maybe they buff bolt, but nerf tower and shift and this, his. Stomp, because stomp is really, really ridiculous, it's six seconds cooldown, five seconds, like stun. It's so stupid, because like even if you undead player, you have a fiends and ground army, one stomp. And for twenty seconds, your army fight only three second. Another seventy seconds, all just stay in the star, in the stun, it's really stupid. And and oh yeah, stomp, stomp is buffed. I think stomp is probably one of the best spell in the game, maybe not base, but one of the best. And for the best race, like to the worst ways to to best. I think worst races, night elf. After. Probably human or orc and best race is undead.
Alright, long walk.
How do I compare with that?
Tell us how you really feel.
How do I feel? Um, so I would say it's tough, because if you have someone on like happy level, he can make certain strategies seem imbalanced. Whereas anyone else playing it, it feels like it's per, it's more balanced. If we take happy out of it, I would say night elf versus undead feels mostly balanced to me, like when I play well and don't make any mistakes. I feel like it's pretty even, yeah, I I would say now versus undead, I I wouldn't complain about it. Gargoyle's, maybe the speed change is a little bit tough to deal with, but I don't have enough experience to say that it's actually too balanced. But I'm gonna say the the contentious thing now, I think riflemen are too strong. I I don't think I'm the perfect person to counter them, but I think that it just feels, I'm used to like ten years ago when you could win with bears. And now it feels like bears and Demon Hunter is just not even an option if the human plays well, so. For human versus night elf, I would say riflemen are too strong, I think Warden is a tough hero to balance, because. I feel like if you play the Warden well and you get good items and you kind of snowball, then she becomes quite impossible to deal with, kind of like the game on Terranis, Todd versus Foggy. But then if the game even goes slightly different and you don't get mana or you have to drain your moon rolls, suddenly Warden is quite weak. And I don't know, it just feels like she can swing the game either way in such a big, there's like a lot of variance with her, so I'm not exactly sure how you would balance it, but I can see why people would say. There's maybe something to change there. Dryads feel a bit squishy in general to me now, um. Maybe dryads give less experience, cost a little bit less wood, but do like one point of damage less or something. I I think dryads are just too much of an all-purpose unit right now, where it's not exactly clear what role they're supposed to play. I think if you make bears slightly tankier, then dryads fall more into a normal role.
Being fucking annoying and they feel it greatly, that's their role.
That's true, that's perfect, um, yeah, like right now versus orc, I see people going mass dryads and it works surprisingly. And I feel like that's not necessarily how the matchup should be working, but. Yeah, so just to summarize, I would say versus undead, it's rather balanced, except I think happy has found the ultimate perfect solution to Demon Hunter bears. Where he makes this expansion quite early at tier three, and then you're forced to push into a Nerubian Tower and you just, it's an instant loss. And every game you see on Netties of happy versus Moon or Loliat, it's a forty-minute game, but in the end happy still wins. And I think he's just perfected it, and so is that imbalanced if you perfected it? I don't know. Versus human, yeah, riflemen, I would say, seem like a problem. Versus orc, I think, Loliat seems to have found a solution where you just, you hit and run over and over and over again and. I think it seems like night elf is ahead of orc right now. I'm not exactly sure if this is just the trend right now and then orcs will kind of adjust again, because I think when the patch first came out. It felt like orc was beating Keeper of the Grove a lot, and then I think they, we found, we as night elves found new timings. But yeah, I would say the matchup is just quite boring for me right now, so even if it's not balanced, I think there's just no variation there. Like, you can go towns or you can go hunt, mass hunters, and there's not so much thought in the strategy, it's more of like the specific tactics or the timings, but yeah. Um, and those are the three, I guess, night elf versus night elf can't be imbalanced, so.
So what's your ranking of the races?
For the races, um, if we say like the top, top, top level, I would say. Undead at the top, night elf, then human, then orc, but I would say. If you switch it, like, if you look at specifically human versus night elf, I would put human over the night elf, but in general, I would say night elf can win more games in general at the very, very top.
Well, you think undead is the best race?
If you play perfectly with no mistakes, I feel like they're so efficient that you're just getting so much value.
Take it away, Scott.
Uh, I I don't really agree with that, but I am an undead, so of course I won't. I think they are good, but I think the. I don't think the race is the best, but I think some of the best players are undead right now, and I think that's. Misleading, because most of the top players in Europe are undead, we have Explode, Van, Happy and all that, and. They are really good and I don't, they make it look easy, but it's not. Uh, I don't, I think most of the matchups are quite even. For example, orc against undead have, the gap has closed very much in, if you look back. Where is it? Thirteen years, it was the most imbalanced matchup of all, and I think that's one of the most balanced matchups right now. And, but I, I think that. I'm on the other side when you say that undead is im- imbalance against human, I think it's quite opposite if the human plays perfect, I think. I don't, I don't think undead has a bit much to, um. Much to do there, but you have to play perfect, and I think. Human is the hardest race, but when you play it the best, I think it's the most efficient, because you can do so much different stuff right now.
So what's your ranking of the races?
I, at the moment, I think orc is the worst, and I think they struggle against every race. I, even Lynn has been struggling and, yeah, and I think on third place right now, it's. I think I will have to put night elf there, because they can basically just play one or two strategies and that's basically hunters. And then they add some mountain giants, and I think they really need some buffs overall, and maybe some nerf on keeper and change around the balance a bit.
Nerf on keeper?
Yeah, probably, maybe. And so yes, you can buff some other heroes, because I think keeper is overused. And then I think it's undead is the second best, because. Undead can play mostly one strategy against every race and that's make it, um, easier to. Be a pretty good player and you don't have to vary it that much. So that's why I think so many undads has. Quite the success, because they mostly play the same against every race, and I think that's help. And then number one, we have human. But as I said, I think human is the hardest race to play and they need really to perfect their game. And that's when, that's really hard, we don't, yeah.
Okay, Duro, do you wanna chime in on this subject?
Uh, well, I play human myself.
I mean.
And, yeah, I mean, I'm not the best player, obviously, uh, maybe that's why I became an admin, so, um.
Talk to us about undead versus human.
Uh, undead versus human, actually, my my honest opinion, if it goes into the super duper duper late game, I think the human has an advantage. And this is most likely like twenty-five minutes or something and everything beyond, but.
Let your brothers down.
The time before is actually the real problem in this matchup, because I think if you do a single. Major mistake, you are complete, completely lost in this game. Uh, and the undead will abuse you, will punish you for every step you take. And I think this matchup is actually not really much or not much fun to play. For the human, so and I think like if you have your arc mage on a high level and your MK and your Paladin, I think you you are good to go. But next this, this matchup is so annoying to play. Yeah, on the other matchups, I don't know, I don't want to add too much, for me, uh, worst to best. I think night elf right now is, in my opinion, the weakest race. Um, but orc is pretty close, maybe, maybe even. Um, next to it or or above this are human and undead, and I think those races are actually kind of on the same level.
And Duro, I want to say your question, you say that late game is human against undead, it's for human, but like. They, he make one bunch and use anti-magic shield, and if human heroes like ten, ten, ten levels. Your banish, both holy light is took just fifty, fifty damage. It just one attack for each, what do you think about it? And which, which like human units you need to do to one late game against undead, like, you have. One abomination, for example, fiends with three zero attack plus bunches for steal your knights. Okay.
Well, shall shall we discuss a whole game now? Uh, I don't have the perfect answer here, it's just my personal opinion. I said I'm not the best player, obviously, and I just think the human power spike of having level three Paladin in the late game is just pretty good. And that's just my opinion, so, yeah.
It's why, because human play only push, like undead is make expansion and human is push him. He can't play a late game, like, and if human knights, it's a push unit. Undead, human have only one late unit against undead, it's graffin. Every unit is really worst against undead, like you need to. To to make like eighty, eighty supply against maybe sixty, maybe fifty for undead. Because if you like, we have a similar supply, you just didn't kill a single fiend. Because frost armor and anti-magic shield, it's all the well.
Well, definitely, uh, actually, I don't want to shut you down now, but I want to to ask a question. Do you think that the current?
Do you think that the current map pool has, um, or can be changed in a way that the matches are actually more balanced? Because, um, for example, like we have many maps with retarded item drops, like greater consumables, where you can find greater mana and stuff. Do you think that the general balance situation could be improved with small adjustments to the maps?
Yeah, against maps, I, about maps, I really want to talk, because we play, for example, on Last Refuge around maybe four years, or maybe five years, because I don't know, but some Europe guy is a map, makes this map. But Blizzard is saying, okay, this is farm on Last Refuge, like so imba, because human can buy shredder, can buy like, and using a scout. And they change the map. Now, like, maybe fifty percent games, human against undead, for example, human lost, because we have a creeps box, like you come to expansion and undead is pull, uh, for example, Merkamp. And now Merkamp is doesn't back and just attack your every unit who come to your expansion. They just not back and they just stay. Like I lost maybe around fifty games already, because these creeps have a bug. Like you attack murlocs and trolls is come to help murlocs. You attack trolls and murlocs come to creep, help like trolls. And every like creeps is a bugger. Like you come to some, want to creep something, but like you start to creep Merkamp, and murlocs come to help Merkamp. What the fuck? I lost game already. Because if we watch some replay of Infi, grand final Infi against one to zero, when Infi is got lightning shield, and on Amazonia, he just red GG. Because after lightning shield, all peasants red, your creeps are slow, plus you like take, take a lot of damage. You understand? On pro level, he can't win this game. For undead, he just don't have some like, hmm, a chance for loss this game, just for, for creep, for creeps, for bugs creeps. They really have a lot of some bugs, and I think, for example, Cassino Hill is not balanced. Three stop middles is not balanced, because on three stop middles, you even can creep a single creep.
Do you think it's important? We try to get some new maps out there, right?
Yes, yes. It's like, I think Last Refuge is a pretty good map. It's the most, is the most balanced map. I think so many players like Happy say, I think Last Refuge is the most balanced map in Warcraft III.
I think a lot of people say Nodarid is like one of the more popular ones these days.
But not, 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 not. Uh, young, like you play human mana and he got lightning shield. Lightning shield and big mana potion, and he win you just with items. Like, or you play against far seer and he got lightning shield. Again, just put lightning shield on wolf and win the game. Or you play against undead, as double VZ, and they creep a small murlocs. Got lightning shield, you wanted to creep expansion, they make lightning shield on the big ogre and just you back. Because you can't creep fucking expansion, and you have no way. You can't win without expert, and you can't make expert, because fucking lightning shield is just drop for your game.
So remove lightning shield, yeah?
Yeah, of course, remove lightning shield, because if I got lightning shield against Night Elf, what I can do? No, nothing. If I got Scroll the Beast against Night Elf, what I can do? One, one V, okay, it's fucking item, not worth. Because some races have a big advantage against some items, like if, do we know Arabrams? Like, and this Arabrams, like in SNG community, like in Russians, Ukraine, so say him like, um, he is, he told the item Book of the Dead Arab book. Because on same maps like Last Refuge on Northern Isles, he just with three, three ghosts in the start creep this camp on Last Refuge. Took Book of the Dead, come to you, someone when you start to make expansion, you lost the game. But if you do against this Night Elf, what Night Elf do? One V? And he got hundred experience. Thanks dude. But if you took this item against human, GG, insta GG. And so much items, got this balance against human, like Scroll the Beast. Against Night Elf, it's the worst, need to remove this item.
What, what do you think is more important, patching the balance or patching, like adding ladder and like adding servers, improving the UI?
I think a balance is more, most important, plus they need to change the map. I hope some guys change Last Refuge and we will see not bugs in the games.
So like, what do you wanna change on Last Refuge exactly?
They creeps not if I human, I want to change. Like you creep Merkamp, I don't want to fight with natural, for example. Because sometimes this creep for natural is come to you, to help Merkamp. I try, I creep Merkamp and murlocs is come to creep, help to Merkamp. What the fuck? On, on pro level, his game is already lost and I, I not do something bad. It just took my mind that Blizzard changed this map and did some shit.
Okay, I wish he was as serious about balance as you, because then we would have some real long discussions. The whole episode would be like six hours. But anyway, I think it's time to move on and do a little bit of a Q and A. We didn't have that many questions actually, or like super relevant questions asked on social media, so you guys can start preparing some questions in the chat. So I think I spotted like two questions. One of them was on Twitter. Janice Bremer asked, Dota skills are often talked about in casts. How important or helpful is it to master Dota as well as Warcraft III? So I think he means like mostly like denies and just like little micro. Longwalk, you wanna take this one?
Yeah, sure. I actually played no Warcraft for like three months last year, and I only played Dota two. And I feel like when I came back, it actually somehow helped my game. I, I would say, I don't know what you guys think, but in the last year or two, I would say last hitting and denies have gotten better than they have ever been before. And I feel like they can actually determine the game, because a lot of these maps, the creep routes that you do either get you very, very close to level three, or get you just to level three. And if you steal one major creep from your opponent, you can take level three, prevent them from getting it, and that can easily change the whole game. So yeah, I'd be curious if you guys think last hitting skills are better now than before, which, yeah, I think they're better than they've ever been.
Yeah, I think with everybody getting better, it's become a game of inches. Whether it's like stealing the opponent's creeps with like one unit or one hero, or denying your own units is like so important nowadays. And like, people have just have gotten so good at both that it really feels like there's little differences sometimes like this, that can affect the game quite a bit. Uh, I don't know what you think about this, Scott?
Yeah, I think, as Longwalk said, that if you play more, if you play some mobiles, you will get better at some aspect. And I think it's actually really important, because people are getting better, as you said, and you need, you can't die random units and just feed them experience over and over, and if you can minimize that, you will give yourself a huge advantage if you can snipe some of his heroes. So yes, I absolutely think it's relevant and need to practice that last hit.
Okay, um, we had a question on Reddit from Human, who said, consider this as a question or just a point to talk about. Considering the fact that Pad created ladder system alone in two days, is it possible that Blizzard stopped working on Reforged? Is there any knowledge about them working on it? Can we force them to give us a sign? Duro?
Well, we are flaming them, we are blaming them, we are calling them out, and yeah, finally Naga has footprint. So obviously, everything works fine. I, I don't understand the question. We can, we can force them to do whatever they want to do, but we will not, never know.
Yeah, we can't really force them to do anything, to be honest, right?
No.
We can spam them up until maybe they react and tell us, alright, yeah, this is like what we're doing, but. Like there is no way we're gonna like write to Blizzard on social media and they're gonna be like, alright, guys, like the ladder is coming, just wait, like a few months or something. That's just not gonna happen. I feel like we're never gonna know.
I feel like if they are really bothered of what you say, um, then they, they kind of send a sign and reply, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they are actually talking seriously in this matter, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's just like, if you, if you really step on the footprint, sometimes you get a reply. It's like, yeah, yeah, we consider this, everything is fine, blah, blah, blah. And in the end, they just do the opposite anyway, so I don't know. I, I, I don't give a damn about this company anymore. They can do whatever they want, as long as we get a stable running game. The community finds, finds its own way and we will gonna make some great tournaments and we will gonna, I don't know, improve the scene and the, the, the possibilities within the game, and yeah, I don't care. We don't need them.
Okay, so let's take, let's take some questions from the chats. This is, this one is for Death Notes. OG Humanity asked, how do you guys feel about all races harass human with a single hero? Death Note?
What, what you mean? I repeat this?
How do you guys feel about all races harass, harass human with a single hero?
Yeah, harass human with a single hero, and you want to say that every hero, just click to your gas cannon archmage, yeah? Just summon like six skeletons and coil, coil, coil to your archmage or warden, just knifed, knifed, knifed to your archmage. Or every like far seer or monkey seer, it's just summon wolves and just I click to your archmage. I am a pro, I may click to your archmage. And, and you will micra him as a pro, like, and if you not micra him as pro, you lost your archmage. And yeah, I do it.
Oh my god. DennisWC3 asked, to you, Duro, will your team support the Rithwick champions with a ladder contest or something? How about a match arena?
Um, by my team, I assume, uh, Back to Warcraft is meant here, or even Warcraft3.info, I don't know. I think for, for both parts of the question, um, it's really, really early in the development stage and we really love what Pat is doing. Um, on Warcraft3.info, we already, yeah, had small idea of bringing up this ladder at some point on Warcraft3.info as well. I don't know, in the past, there have been ladder competitions, but organized by Back to Warcraft. Maybe something like this can be repeated. I don't know, it's, it's really early and let's just find out and give Pat some time to set this up correctly. And then we can all play and make some fun with the new toy we get.
Reforged Polska asked, hello there, I got a question. Who was watching replay of Terror and TGW and made opinion to not do a re-game? At the moment of this thing, the score was forty-six versus thirty-eight in food. The rule says that if a party sip and disconnect after the fourth minute has passed, it is up to the admins whether the match will be restarted or not. The replay needs to be sent to a referee who will then decide whether the match has to be restarted or not.
Um, these are the new rules, the adjusted, uh, the adjustments we made. During the incident of disconnect, the rules were different, and the rule said TGW, TGW gets the win if he claims it. So the replay was actually not really necessary at all.
Uh, Human Rec asks, is Longwalk gonna be more active again?
So I've played like a hundred games on netis this week, so I guess I'm already more active. But first I ran into Ina and I got crushed in that game, and then I ran into Happy and got crushed, so I just need a, a better run, but I'm trying, so.
Uh, actually, Kevin asked the follow-up question. How will you prefer, how will you prepare for ESL Meister Shaft?
Probably just playing on netis, and I think I'll check out Pat's ladder as well. I think that's a good way to practice.
Someone asked, will I or did I ban Terror from my tournaments? Uh, the tournament's already started. I feel like it's, you know, a little bit unfair to ban him right now from it, so I don't plan on banning him from this one, but I'll think about it and maybe in the future I'll ban him for like playing in my tournaments for like a few months and stuff. But I thought like for the tournaments and like for Terror, it would be pretty bad now, and also because I thought that the judgment from, uh, of banning him six months was like pretty severe. I kind of feel like they banned him for me, so to speak. Uh, so I don't plan on banning him from my tournament, no. Uh, if you guys see any question that you see worth mentioning. I see Death Note asking me about acolytes. I don't know. I don't know what you expect out of this one.
No, I just asked Scoot, like what do you think about Lamborghini acolyte? You know, like you, you start to attack acolyte, and just acolyte is come to around the map, and you even like you need speed scroll maybe, you need like ten knights with speed scroll to kill your acolyte. What do you think about it?
Uh, I think it's pretty, I think they're in a good shape right now. Before it was way, if, before it was way too easy to kill the acolytes and we could, we couldn't make them, just run away with them. So I think it's, they're in a good spot right now.
Yeah, like, like soon, I think Blizzard will make like one acolyte, he's killed one footman, yeah? It's, I think it's will be soon, because acolyte now is kill archer one-on-one. Do you know that?
Uh, I haven't seen that one. You have, you have to give me some proof afterwards.
No, you can check it. You can Google like, and you will see, you will see that acolyte is really kill one archer one-on-one. Like, just a single worker, like kill archer. I also like, soon Blizzard will make like one acolyte is beat footman and say, get out of my game, yeah?
Okay, TheWraith89 asked, tough question for the guest. Would you like to see different leagues? In Warcraft III or like in Dota two, League of Legends or CS:GO, for example, player got different level of experience and they can meet opponents from their league only. When they achieve higher results, they can join higher and advanced league where they can face better players. In football, each season, teams fall from leagues down, and a few teams can join higher, higher and such. Uh, Longwalk, you wanna take this?
Sorry, I just got distracted for a second. Sorry.
Uh, Duro?
Well, in my opinion, you shouldn't, or the, the general league idea is not bad at all. So, but in my opinion, it should be just a visual thing, so the matchmaking should be separated. And you should be able to also match with players from, from other leagues. As long as, um, your recent results, um, kind of equalize itself, so it's, it's, it's a good match for both players. So in my opinion, yeah, leagues, leagues are a good idea to kind of visualize this, this kind of ladder stuff. And if that gives players a good, good experience, why not? I don't mind.
Question to Longwalk from To Forever. How do you feel about NA Warcraft III? Do you have any newcomers? What about old-school players? Do they still have any passion to play seriously?
So it's kind of strange for me, because I live in Germany now, so I'm in a time zone difference from the rest of my Dust team. I mean, obviously, there's Hitman, he plays a ton of games, he's, I think he has natural talent, he has really good like game sense, I would say. I played some games against Cruncher this week, and I don't know how active Cruncher is, but he still is quite good. He also is just very, very good, natural game sense. I have to say like the typical North America crew, like OC is also, I would say he's quite good. Like, I know maybe he's going hunters every game, but he's actually, like, he can take games off of very good players. I don't know, I think there's actually quite a lot of skill in North America. I would say the problem is that people aren't so consistent. So even if a North American wins one game, it's really tough to see a North American beating a European or Asian player in a best of five. And I think that just comes with, honestly, like before I moved to Europe and I was playing all my games in America like ten years ago, you're playing against people in the ladder who just aren't playing so many games and they're not in the same skill level. And so you're not practicing at the high level that you need to play at. And now when I moved to Europe and I'm not one of the top players anymore, it was tough at first, and now I feel like I'm getting better practice than I had before. So I think there are a lot of good North American players. I think that if they can play on netis, that will help a lot. And yeah, I would say the names you've already heard are probably the names to still look out for, like Cruncher, Hitman. Then you have OC and Super Bowl, like I'm not trying to list every name, there's a lot of good players. And I know there's like a Dust League on Friday, so you can check out new names there too, but. And I know there's like a Dust League on Friday, so you can check out your names there too, but yeah, I think you know the names already.
Alright, uh, let's give this one to Scott. From Snesson, how long will it take before players catch up to Happy? What is it that makes him so much better than every other European slash American?
Uh, good question. I think when he played back in the days, he, he wasn't as dominating. And, but when he came back from StarCraft II, he had added a lot of more macro, micro, different kind of you, okay, right. He, he got a lot more all around when he came back from StarCraft II and then he just he does this as a whole time job and I think that's the big difference. Everyone else has their jobs they attend to and they can't play that much. And I think that is the biggest factor that he gets paid to do this.
Alright, thank you. Um, Cremingpies asked for Death Notes. Here we go again. Because human militia timer got nerfed, do you think peasants hit points militia get hit point buffs, so not harassable as much?
Yeah, I think it's really for Blizzard, it's most important to buff peasants. But I really don't know how, maybe it's like archers get magic in wolf for maybe 33%. But I don't know how it's helped, it's really need to test, like if Warden is harassed by peasants, I they maybe survive more, plus like one health knives or coil nova, impale, try to kill, but I really think that need Blizzard change something for humans peasants is most survive, maybe add some hit points, maybe add some resist. I don't know.
Okay, um, PrezRak asked, Todd, ask Duro if Back to Warcraft can not ban me on Twitter? Duro, you don't need to answer that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer it. Number one, stop saying stupid ass stuff on social media, that gets you banned. Number two, the next time you mention that on my channel, I'm gonna ban you from there. Shut up with that shit. Um, Dennis asked, Todd, any insights on Pro Tour? Seems it will end everything online, maybe even cancel, yeah? I guess like, we haven't really talked about this, but like with the situation with the coronavirus, it's very unlikely that there is gonna be offline tournaments sometime soon, like we need to wait for the situation to like stabilize slash get better, so is there anything you guys like want to talk about? How likely do you think it is that WCS, oh, not WCS, sorry, DreamHack, Young Shopping will happen, DreamHack Summer?
I don't think it will happen. I think there will probably be one to two weeks and then we say this is cancelled and I think we will have to either play it online or it get postponed to maybe DreamHack Winter or something. But I think they will have to change the plan because this is an unforeseen situation that I don't think anyone expected when they announced this this plan of tournaments.
Yeah. Uh, Reforged Polska, I really want to talk about this Terror thing, doesn't he?
Surprise.
Duro, what was your motivation to change the rules of Global Clankup just the day after the issue with Terror and TGW? Do you consider it as necessary change for upcoming additions connected with bugged and unstable game clients?
The motivation to change rules we have is kind of an obvious question. We try to always have the best rules possible and if a situation occurs which reminds us or shows us a certain rule is not good or needs to be improved, then, well, we have to admit that there is some weakness in the rulebook and we have to step it up. And yeah, that's the reason why we did this, because a drop like this or a disync happened and we kind of chose the easy way in the past to give the decision to the opposing player to either take the win or give the regame. And we decided to no longer follow this, yeah, this route. And now force an admin decision all the time to avoid situations like that.
I have a question to Duro. You guys making a tournament for only Koreans and it's just four of them. Did you try to invite Lin or Moon?
No.
That's it?
That's it. I mean, it was a yes or no question, wasn't it? No, we haven't considered Lin or Moon because we, um, kind of think they are above the others, decently above the others. And we thought for entertainment purpose, a rather close tournament is the best for all involved. And therefore we thought we don't invite Lin or Moon to beat the other three or beat the other two or whatever.
Um, Warcar asked, Todd, don't you think that more 2v2 tour can bring more new viewers to this game, not all love to watch shame players 1v1 tanks? I agree. I think we don't have enough 2v2 tournaments and I think 2v2 in Warcraft III is like absolutely amazing, so it's like my next tournament will either be something centered around 2 on 2 or around new maps, maybe even around both, like we'll see. Alright, I think that's been a great discussion, guys. Thank you so much for joining me. Let's do some shoutouts. Um, let the people know where they can follow you, everything, social media, Twitch, all of that. And then we'll say our goodbyes for tonight. Uh, Duro, go ahead first.
Yeah, well, I got a Twitter account. You can see it on this, on the screen right now. Um, that's, that's mainly it. I'm not not too frequently putting my face into a camera or being spotlighted. I'm more likely to be in the back somewhere and, yeah. Uh, it's quite fine for me this way, but it was, it was a pleasure to be here. I really enjoyed it. Thanks for having me.
Yeah.
And it's an awesome format. Keep going.
Thank you for joining us. If you guys are listening on this through a podcast platform, Duro's Twitter is @DuroWC3, but the O is a zero, so D U R zero W C three. Scott?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for today and as Duro mostly is behind the scenes in Team Three. Most people think it's Enderspire that is running things, but it's mostly, mostly me, so. Uh, it's fun to pick out today and shout out to the rest of the boys in Team Three and I think you need to have Starshape and Death Note together because Starshape is just as much as a wine as Death Note is, just haven't shared it publicly yet.
Uh, where can people follow you?
Uh, on my Twitter, you can see it on the screen, Skutikova.
Do you stream as well?
Uh, very, very, very rare, mostly for like two or three people.
Okay. Uh, Longwalk?
Yeah, first of all, thanks for having me. This was really cool. I'm glad you invited me. Um, keep doing it. Uh, shoutouts to the Dust team and to Back to Warcraft. So this Friday is the Dust League, so definitely check that out if you guys want to follow North America and help make us great again. Um, yeah, no, thanks a lot for having me. I'm gonna stream some on Twitch under Longwalk, so if you guys want to watch me play, just keep an eye out and I'll try to stream more this week, but yeah, thank you.
Any social media?
Not Warcraft related, so maybe in the future.
Yeah. I think in Warcraft, we definitely need to start using Twitter more and stuff. I think it's really cool to follow like the Warcraft III personality, see what like everybody's up to. Obviously, like I don't want to force anyone, but I definitely encourage everybody to get Twitter, whether you're you want to write about it and post about it in your personality or you're like one of the viewers and you want to follow some of the people. Because there is always, it's always a great way to find out about some of the news. Death Notes, your shoutouts, your last parting words. Anything else you want to add about the balance discussion first? It's your last chance.
No, I think balance discussion now is closed. And I want to say to all like play Warcraft III, trying a lot and like keep together. I think we have a really nice community in Warcraft III. It's, we really have not toxic virus, like not toxic community like Dota or even Counter Strike or Fortnite. I very like so much and I, I stream every day and I like people who join to my stream and just keep us and like love Warcraft III.
And so people can follow you on Twitch and Twitter, right?
Followed is not.
Do you use Twitter or not?
Not.
Did you hear what I just said?
Yeah, yeah. Twitter is more important, but I'm terrible at it.
Oh my god, alright.
I'm sorry.
Be careful, I'm gonna put a sick beat and then put your rants on top of it.
I'm sorry.
Alright, thank you very much, guys, for joining me, uh, and yeah, we'll see you around. Have a good night, guys. Take care.
You too.
Bye.
Bye.
Goodnight.
Um, alright. Guys, thank you very much for tuning in, everybody. We're gonna do a few shoutouts of our own here and then talk about the Patreon as well. So thanks to my guests for joining me, of course. Make sure to follow them if you want to find out more of their contents. I will be putting like all the links as always under the stream, sorry, under the video on YouTube and I made sure to try and mention as many of their social media as possible. Uh, if you are enjoying the show, please consider supporting us on Patreon. This helps us to cover production costs such as podcast hosting and continue providing this content. This podcast is live now on iTunes, Stitcher, Spotify, Podbean, SoundCloud and many more. So if you want to have this show delivered to you in audio format, just search for Todd's Tunnel Meeting on your favorite platform. Visit the Patreon page at patreon.com/todgaming. Supporters get the YouTube show VODs and podcasts, email to them ASAP. YouTube VODs are public a day later. Plus, I have quite a few more perks listed on different tiers such as priority Q and A questions, Discord perks, monthly replay packs, custom recorded voice message you can use for a stream alert, voicemail greeting or whatever, ability to cast votes for the future direction of my tutorial contents and you can submit replays for me to analyze live on stream and much more. Check it out. So yeah, as you can see, these are all the tiers and all of the perks, so I definitely recommend checking that out and if you want to support the show, you will be very welcome. So join my Discord and follow my Twitter for updates. Subscribe to YouTube for show VODs and game highlight videos. Thanks for watching, everyone, and see you next week.